Follow the order of the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District, this regular meeting of October 2nd, 2019. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with good liberty and justice for all.
Sadly, we would like to request a moment of silence in memory of Joe Mercurio, the father of one of our students who passed away in an accident. So let's just do that for a second. I mean, keep the Mercurio family in our minds and hearts. Thank you. First, second order of business and much more delightful is the appointment of two board members. I wanted to turn this over to Courtney McCarthy, as Courtney was the person who facilitated the whole selection process, or much of the selection process.
Yes, she did.
Yes, she did. And so I wanted to turn that over to describe and to explain who we've selected and the process and maybe a few other things. Mark?
Okay, so I don't have a timeline, but several weeks ago, we put out a call looking for new members to join our board. We were down two members. And to our very pleasant surprise, we received, actually six letters initially from six really different and very qualified candidates. One ended up, one pulled their name, and so we ended up meeting with, the board discussed how we wanted to go about this, as it wasn't anything we had done before. We decided we wanted to be able to meet with each individual candidate. We put together a couple of questions to make sure that we all asked them, we asked them the exact same questions, and we sat and talked for 20 to 30 minutes with each person and had some really great conversations. It was a really, really difficult decision, and I think we all felt that we would have, the board would have been really strong with any one of those five candidates. What we ended up deciding is, obviously tonight, we're welcoming Jocelyn, I'm going to butcher your last name until I learn it. I kept hearing it on your...
Apicello.
Cello or Cello?
Cello.
Cello, Apicello, who is joining our board with a wealth of information regarding teaching experience, with volunteer experience, community organizing experience, and as well as a current parent to a child in the school, and one rising.
And also a volunteer of the planning board as well, the planning committee, sorry.
And our second candidate, who could not be here tonight unfortunately, but he will be joining us in three weeks at our next meeting, is Matthew Spicer, who is also a parent and is a teacher to a high school, in a high school in New York, and brings a wealth of knowledge around curriculum and working with school boards and administration. And we're really excited to be working with him. So welcome, Jocelyn.
And we just wanted to thank, let everybody, let the public know that the three members who we could not invite onto the board were wonderfully talented and, for the purposes of anonymity, we won't mention their names, but at the same time, I want, it would be important for the public to know that we will be sending out invitations to, as we do to everybody in the public, to participate in committees. And as we see these three folks could have a powerful impact in the committee level. So we're looking forward to the involvement of everyone. Okay, so the order of business at hand. I need a motion, let's see, should I read it first, or should I get the motion to read it? What do you think? Okay, I need a motion.
So moved.
The motion is to appoint for the Board of Education, Jocelyn Apicello. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District hereby appoints Jocelyn Apicello to be a member of the Board of Education effective October 2, 2019, to fill the position left vacant due to the resignation of Raymond O'Rourke. As Apicello shall hold this position until the annual meeting on May 19th, 2020, at which time a person will be elected to fill the remainder of his Apicello's unexpired term. And what that means is that Jocelyn will be filling out Raymond O'Rourke's term, and at which point Jocelyn or anyone else can seek election for that position, for that seat. Does that make sense?
Come down to my right.
Yes.
I have a question about that.
Go for it.
When there's a regular, when, at an election in the May, doesn't the new person usually get sworn in to the meeting in July? Isn't that when you join? I'm just curious about how the, what these are.
Well, these positions, these end in May, May 19th.
Okay.
So someone will begin the next day or as soon as they're sworn in, and it's determined on vacancies and the, 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 the vote getters, you know, who gets the votes.
Gotcha, okay.
It has some, it has something to do with the fact, because there's no one holding that seat, that whoever wins that seat would be eligible to fill that seat right away, immediately.
Correct.
After the election.
Okay, well, everyone's running in May.
Yeah, it does. Got it.
And then go from there.
Terrific. All right, thank you. Do you want to do the swearing in now?
Um, the vote first?
Oh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions, and the ayes have it. Jocelyn, welcome aboard. Now we need the swearing in or the oath of office. Very good.
Can I just put my hand up? Aye, Jocelyn Apicello.
Aye, Jocelyn Apicello.
Just only swear.
Just only swear.
But I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of trustee of the Board of Education of Garrison Union Free School District.
Of trustee of the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thanks, thank you. You can sign.
Can we applaud?
Aye.
Excellent. Sarah, you want to make a motion for Matthew Spicer?
Make a motion?
Second?
Seconded.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Garrison Union Free School District hereby appoints Matthew Spicer to be a member of the Board of Education effective October 2, 2019, to fill the position left vacant due to the resignation of Diana Swinburne. Mr. Spicer shall hold this position until the annual meeting on May 19th, 2020, at which time a person will be elected to fill the remainder of Mr. Spicer's unexpired term. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? And the ayes have it. Mr. Spicer is appointed to the board. He could not be with us tonight, he is, it's his birthday. And he's planning, he's got a round number, and he is celebrating that birthday, and I'm hoping he's having a good time. But he will be sworn in on October 20...
3rd.
3rd, thank you. Okay. Presentation. You want to do the intros?
Yes, so safety and security is always on our minds, it's part of our capital project, it's sort of part of our emergency response teamwork, for assessment teamwork. We had a lockdown today, and there are a lot of state mandates and laws around safety and security, and I know lots of questions and concerns around safety and security, not just in schools, but in the greater world, just because of unfortunately the climate that we're living in. And I know that during board conversations, mostly about district safety plans and building safety plans, there were some questions. And then we also had the unfortunate event with the Mercurio family and the transportation, communication, and reunification. We'd like to review that with you as well, things that went well and things that we could improve. And so I want to introduce you to Frank O'Leary. He's our BOCES Regional Safety Coordinator, who's been with us for two years, working with our teams and walking the building and just helping us making sure that the building is safe for the community, for parents and our kids, of course. So, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everybody. So I'll just take you through a couple of things. So as Laura said, Frank O'Leary, Regional Safety Coordinator, BOCES. I taught for 15 years. I did a lot of work. My first teaching job, three days into my teaching job, was 9/11. So we, you know, I kind of was like indoctrinated at that level, and you know, when I was student teaching, I was student teaching during the online massacre. So it was, safety and security was always in my mindset, and it was just work that I had done with the state, with, you know, with the state police, Department of Homeland Service and Homeland Security Emergency Service, and a number of different agencies. So it's something that I'm really passionate about, so if I, you know, start to go off rails, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, because, you know, I live this every day, we're in a lot of different districts, we see a lot of different perspectives, and it's important to understand the why, I think, behind anything that we do, and, you know, why we have the drills that we have, why we have the plans that we have, and where that comes into play in keeping everybody safe, not only while they're in school, but when they're out of school as well. Because that's the ultimate goal, you know, we're not educating students just to, you know, pass math in class, we're educating them when they get in the world to use those skills. And it's the same thing for safety, and I truly believe that. So to take you through just, you know, some of the topics and to kind of, you know, brief you on some of the mandates and the requirements of the legislation. New York State, when you look at a national perspective, and I, you know, New York State has its problems, and I'm not going to say that they're perfect, but one of the things that I will say is, New York State, over the past 20 years, have really incorporated a lot of the best practices that are out there in terms of safety and security. Every time there's an issue, or an event, or an incident, or a crisis that arises, and there's something to be learned and something to be gained from it, New York State will change their mandate, will change and update their legislation. So that's one thing I have to say, I always feel very confident in our planning process. With that being said, every school district in the state of New York is required to have a district-level emergency response plan. That's the emergency response plan that's on your website. That emergency response plan is very bare bones, very 10,000-foot view of the emergency response to the district. Basically what it does, it just kind of goes through some of the basic protocols, save legislation key points, such as dealing with violent incidents, such as dealing with threats to the building, such as emergency dismissal, early dismissal, that's what that plan is meant to do. To be honest with you, New York State is still working through what that plan's function is besides that, because there's a couple of other things that could go on that plan that they're not 100% sure, you know, how to visualize it. Because one thing that has happened is, as the plans have evolved, a lot of that information has now migrated its way into the building level plan. And the building level plan has changed over the years. It actually, in the past two years, it's now changed into the document that you saw a month ago or two months ago. The Building Level Emergency Response Plan is a confidential plan that outlines the building emergency response. And a typical school building is anywhere between 70 and 150 pages. And what that does, it outlines every protocol and procedure that can really be thought of in the event of an emergency. There's three parts to that plan, there's a basic part, which outlines the team members and the requirements and the responsibilities. There's what's called the functional annex piece, which, a functional annex, just so you're aware of, is basically a set of procedures that can be applied in various different scenarios. So such as, there's an evacuation annex. So in the event of a fire, you can evacuate. In the event that there's a chemical spill, you can evacuate. In the event that there's a bomb threat, you can evacuate. Set of procedures used in a bunch of different scenarios. The last part of the plan is what we call threat-specific annexes, designated to specific threats to the building, such as Indian Point, such as active shooter, such as bomb threats. So all those things are in that plan and are part of that plan. Along with that requirement, there's the drilling requirement, right? Every building in New York State is required to run 12 emergency drills a year, eight of them are evacuation drills, four of them are lockdown drills, and one is an emergency dismissal drill, 15 minutes before the normal dismissal time. That's what's happening described. Out of those 12 drills, eight have to happen before December 3rd or 1st. When those drills are run, there's a couple of different requirements for those drills. One of the requirements for the evacuation drill is that you have to block exits for four out of the eight evacuation drills. There is a recommendation, it's not a requirement yet, but along those lines, that we increase drill complexity age-appropriate as the building team decides that, you know, it's appropriate for the building, depending on what we've learned after we do a drill or after we have an actual event take place. So Laura alluded to a little while ago, the idea of, we talk about what went right, what went wrong, and what can we improve. And that's always a key part of the planning and drilling process, is, you know, you don't want to do the same thing over and over again and find that you're not getting any better. That's the idea of doing what we call an after-action review. After something happens, we ask what went right, what went wrong, and what can we improve. The last part of the requirements, probably the heaviest part we're going to talk about tonight, is the team and committee requirements. By law, New York State says that every building and district, right, so now just saying that, the Garrison team has to fulfill two roles, okay? There's a health and safety committee role as per the rescue legislation. What that is, is basically a committee to discuss health and safety concerns, indoor air quality, work orders, slips, trips, and falls, things along those lines. On top of that, there's a requirement that every building has to have a safety team and what's called an emergency response team. And there are two different things. To make it as simple as I can, the emergency response team is a small subset of the building safety team. The building safety team is a planning team and a team to support in the event of a crisis, whereas the emergency response team is the team that gets called to the crisis and decides who they have to activate after. So if somebody slips and breaks a leg, right, they get on, you know, they call the main office, right, and they might say, okay, you know, we have somebody down here, all of a sudden Alex probably will get called because he's a building incident commander, we have the nurse show up, and then we activate people to support the effort as needed. The building is trained in what's called the Incident Command System. The Incident Command System is a federally recognized system from FEMA, and the idea is that it's a very hierarchical system that ties in with local law enforcement, state law enforcement, whoever responds to the scene, as well as fire and EMS. With that being said, that team is really whoever's on scene at that time to respond to the emergency, because every emergency needs what's called an incident commander, and that person has to direct the incident, regardless of what title they held in the building or hold in the district, they have to be able to respond to that scene. So that's part of the training and the work that we do on a monthly basis. With that being said, on top of that, when we have our team and committee meetings, we get together around a table, we have these discussions, we have these trainings. You have health and safety, you have emergency response, you have building safety. Into that, the next level of this is the idea, again, a required team is what's called a post-incident response team. Sometimes they call it a crisis. That's the mental health piece of, or after an incident takes place, what are we doing to support our students and staff and community after the incident is over? Last but not least, is the idea of threat assessment. This is an idea that came out a couple of years ago. Just recently, and when I say just recently, I mean about 2018 in the summer, Secret Service, Department of Homeland Security, Homeland Security Emergency Service, and FBI have all released guidance documents, making a recommendation to schools that they have a threat assessment team. Right now, it's not explicit in the legislation, it's recommended in the legislation. What the legislation says is that schools have a committee or a team responsible to respond to threats and violence, they're just not calling it a threat assessment. So these are all parts of the mandate that have to take place in a school on a really a daily basis. Any questions on that? I know a lot of verbiage, real quick.
Questions? Want to slow Frank down a second?
Yeah, sure. This may not be the best time to ask, I mean, maybe later in your presentation, but, I mean, we're all aware of, you know, the catastrophic, low-probability events that have happened. In your experience in the last couple of years, what are the more frequent threats that actually occur? I mean, give some examples, you know?
Yeah, it's actually a great question. So a couple of things. One, when we talk about emergency planning, and that's part of that planning document, it takes a multi-hazard approach. You know, so like you said, we're not just looking at the active shooter threat, we're not just looking at the bomb threat, we're looking at the fire, the chemical spill, the bus accident, the, you know, the microburst. Again, low probability, but it happened. You know, one of the biggest things that we have here is, we have, and when I say here, I mean in the region, is we have minor fires that cause building evacuations. We have fume incidents.
These are things that happened in the last two years.
Yes. I've been, because I've been in the job two years, so that's what I can talk to. Bus accidents, another one. You know, again, microbursts, I'm not going to say it's a high frequency, because it's not, but we do have weather events, okay? You know, we have, the other big thing that we deal with a lot is law enforcement activity in the surrounding area, wild animals in the surrounding area. So when we talk about those protective actions, we talk about shelter in place, holding place, evacuate, lockout, lockdown, you know, lockout is one of those things that help us protect us from law enforcement activity, not protect us from law enforcement, but protect us from, you know, the incident that causes the law enforcement activity, but the wild animal as well. And that's what we're seeing a lot of, you know, we had, you know, beginning of last year, beginning of school year, there was a ram running around the middle of many packed schools, you know, it was, it got out, there was a coyote that got in, and it caused disruption to the school day. Because when we, you know, I do, it was a prank, I was a Carmel High School grad, so my first response was, well, did the Carmel High School kids do it? You know, and they said, no. What it was, when they went back and they looked, it was literally a coyote or something jumped in and killed a bunch of sheep, and then the ram went running loose. So again, it disrupts the school day. You know, we had a bear the other day in another school district, you know, there was a bear sighting right outside the building. Luckily it was across the street, you know, maybe there was no crossing guards, so the bear stayed there. But the idea is that we have to, you know, look at all those types of incidents. So, to that end, to the question you asked, and this is a little bit later, but I'll address it now, when we train our teams, we train them that multi-hazard approach, and looking at it from a very simplified view. We have five actions that we can use to increase, to help life safety. You know, that's our priority number one. We always think about priorities. Life safety is number one. Fire, evacuate, boom, we got it. You know, wild animal outside or police activity, we put the building into lockout, right? You see somebody approaching the building with a weapon, that's lockdown, right? You know, microburst happening, we start seeing branches flying around, probably going to want a shelter in place. So we start having those conversations.
Microburst, what's a microburst?
Microburst is like, it's a quick, fast downburst of wind, basically, it's like a low, you know, I don't know if you're doing neuroscience, chemistry is my thing, but basically what happens is a big push-down of air and pressure, and then it blows outwards. And they call it microburst, it's not really a tornado, it's not a thing, it hit Pudman County last year, that's what caused the deaths in Newburgh, and that's what caused, you know, luckily it hit at 4:30. You know, I tell people, I said, you want to think about something, take that microburst and dial it back, you know, four hours. Now it's at 12:30, 30:00 tomorrow. So that's the kind of things that we talk about, you know? And we look at the spectrum, because everything is always a spectrum. You know, a bank robbery in Cold Spring is likely an issue for here, and put it in the lockout, but somebody robbing a gas station down here, I know I was obsessed in that gas station, but anyway, you know, and somebody coming here, it's a different type of threat, but it's a spectrum. Always, again, life safety is a priority. So I hope that answers your questions. Yeah? Any other questions? If we want to move on?
No, move on.
So Garrison Safety Team, so what does it look like to somebody for this building? So some things to be aware of. We do meet monthly, we meet, you know, for about three hours a month to discuss these types of issues, we, you know, we typically have an agenda that people, and others do. We do have some things that we're mandated to cover, such as health and safety items, such as after-action reviews for drills, but then we also provide training. So some of the things that we try to do here is run through what we call tabletop exercises. So, you know, just what would I do if, that type of question? You know, one of the things that we started to talk about last year is, what would we do if we had to reunify our students? And that's what came up last year about building a reunification plan that we had to enact two weeks ago. That's where all that stuff arises from. We will do exercises, we'll walk around the building, sometimes we just take a walk around the building and look for hazards. You know, that's part of all what that group, you know, is really empowered to do, and that's one of the things that I like about working with the team, is they do feel a level of empowerment, a level of buying, and we'll talk a little bit about it later, but people have adopted projects to make this building safer, which I think is super important. We after-action review things, what went right, what went wrong, what can we improve, and then we work to make a better practice. You know, when it comes to school safety, it's one of those things that the more you know, the less you're settled sometimes, because when you start figuring things like, well, what happens if, what happens if, what happens if? You know, and you can get down that rabbit hole and get really a little overwhelmed sometimes. So what I tell people is, we always look for that better practice, you know, we can always get better and always can get better, but there's always going to be something else. There's always going to be something else that we can't account for. You know, we talk about, you know, a possible bus accident, we just try to figure out what our plans and procedures are in place for that, but then all of a sudden, now there's a bus accident with a gas leak and that type of stuff. So we always want to think about, you know, the different scenarios and how we can respond and what makes us better to respond. You know, we have the forest in the back, so what do we have? All right, so now we need cell phones, we need the numbers, you know, does it make sense to have 911? Yeah, of course it makes sense to not have 911, but if you're bouncing off a different tower, it's not going to come through appropriately. So we learn these types of things, and we don't just do it here, we do it around the region, trying to figure out what mitigations we can put in place if we want to become better. One of the challenges that Garrison has, as you all well know, is that, you know, we are a staff unit, so with that being said, right, you know, and again, we don't know the exact number, but it's probably about one-third of the staff is part of this emergency response team, just by nature. You know, New York State recommends you train too deep in every role. There's eight required roles, there's 16 recommended roles, right, so you take that number, it's 32 people, okay? You know, so we have people that are wearing multiple hats, and again, I say that as a nod to the people that are wearing the multiple hats, because they do take their roles and responsibilities very seriously. You know, one thing, just to tell a quick story, when we were talking about the problems, you know, when we talk about what went right, what went wrong, what can we improve, one of the things that we always do is, communication's always a problem somewhere. There's always a communication issue somewhere. So one of the things that we had done last year, and we did it over the summer, but we had, you know, Melissa Harris, one of the staff members, and Alex and I sat down and we talked about public information and just what that means. You know, and we looked at a number of different videos, lessons that were learned from different school crises, and what the best practice was, or the better practice was, because at the time, you know, we learned some things and some things have changed since then, because things are always changing, they're getting better, but unfortunately, a crisis has to take place for us to learn. Any questions on this piece? All right? So, some of the fruits of training that I've seen. So this little diagram here, this comes from FEMA, and this kind of drives all our training, it's a five-step process, all right? You know, the idea that we want to prevent, we want to mitigate, we want to prepare, but we also have to respond, and then eventually we'll have to recover, okay? Question is, it's not always, you know, if it's going to happen, it's when it's going to happen. It can be something very small, it can be something very medium, or it can be something very large. You know, and that's just, we have to think in that realm and in those type of, in that type of spectrum, because we don't know what the next crisis is going to be. But unfortunately, when you deal with the school population, you deal with a population of anybody, there's always going to be some sort of crisis, and we have to be able to respond in kind. One of the biggest things that I've seen is a mindset change, is that people are viewing safety as a mindset and as a priority, not as an idea of, okay, this is something we have to worry about after something happens, or, you know, after something happens, we're going to say, no, take it seriously. This isn't in the mindset of everyone, and I can attest to it, because every time I'm going to the building, I'm like, hey, I'll talk to them. You know, can you take a look at this, or can you do that? And it really means a lot, because, one, they're thinking in that mindset, and that's important, because you can have, you know, millions and millions of dollars of security and all these types of things, right, but the minute somebody pops a side door open to run to their car, you've now compromised the entire security of the building. You know, and it has happened, that's, again, we talk about issues that have happened in schools, and that happened in schools, and unfortunately, that caused an active shooter incident in Pudman County. Somebody wanted to go out and have a cigarette, three days after they were doing it, two teachers, and they compromised the security of the building. So when we look at all these little things, we really want people to think in a very serious mindset, not a alarmist mindset, but a serious mindset, because this is the world that we live in in 2019. You know, and unfortunately, this is where we are, so we have to deal in kind. So the other thing that I just wanted to highlight is this idea of volunteer work. I don't know if you've seen the parent handout that you have yet?
I haven't.
Yeah, oh, you did, okay, yeah, it's, it's an exemplar for the region, just so everybody knows.
Oh, yeah, and it might be in the...
Yep, there it is. Yeah. So it's one of my favorite documents to use, and I use the Garrison one. So again, we talk about trying to communicate an emergency and let people know what's going on in an emergency, that's something that is done preemptively, because people always say, well, I don't know the difference between a lockdown and a lockdown, right? It just happens, I mean, it happens to law enforcement. I mean, it happens to law enforcement. So we wanna have something handy that we can reference and say, yes, it's here. What can you do in an emergency? How can you help us? So as we've gone on, and as we've gone through this process, you know, this is the information that people need. And again, you have here, and this was a project that someone's done themselves, you know, and worked through it and created this wonderful document. I had a training last week, I gave out the Garrison, I'm proud to give out the Garrison documents, and hey, this is what your district should be having. Couple other things that have been done, you know, just the idea of building maps, walking around the building, labeling exterior doors, figuring out, you know, information that can make the response better. You know, again, a lot of it is confidential, you know, we're not gonna, not that we can't share it out with you guys, but it's the idea that we think in that mindset. So, when a first responder comes and says, okay, where are your shut-offs? Anybody on the team can say, I know where it is, I can show you on this map where they are. So we're trying to increase that speed of response, because when it comes down to it, it's really all about timing. You know, when we think about life safety, the quicker we can respond, the better we will respond. Because that's just a time-tested lesson. And then last but not least, is just, you know, having a conversation about communication avenues. I always talk about communication, communication's always a problem. So one of the things that we did, and we'll talk a little bit more about it later, but with the reunification, we talked about the problems of communication, with the communication, and how we can improve, and I think we already have a lot of solutions to that end. Yes?
Are you referring to the incident from a week ago, or two weeks ago?
Yes, yes.
And you'll be addressing it?
We're gonna address that, sure, sure. Yeah, no problem. So any questions on this?
Well, you made the distinction between a safety mindset and an alarmist mindset.
Yes.
And since we have a lot of young kids in the school, can you be more specific about how you foster the first and avoid the second?
Sure. So probably the best way I can do it, there's a lot of information out there, and you see it on the news, and you see all this type of stuff, right? So, you know, when we, because again, fire, smoke, chemical spill, you know, bad odor or whatever, we need to know how to do an evacuation, right? So we train the students to do an evacuation appropriately, right? You know, you have the fire alarm, you hear an announcement, and you get up, you line up, you go out the building, you know, you line up with your teacher, and they're in community techs, right? That, to me, is a safety mindset. You have to know how to get out of the building quickly, orderly, safely, right? But we're not gonna sit here and, you know, pump smoke into the building, you know, to make it real. You left, but you left, I'll tell you this, because the reason why I'm using that example is because when it comes to lockdowns, right? So when we train somebody in a lockdown, we train them that you have to hide and be away from the line of sight, right, from the, right? So if I'm training a kindergartner or a first grader, and I'm not the expert at this, but, you know, when I'm saying, talking to the first graders, but we do it age-appropriate, right? You're trying to hide from a bad guy or an animal, that's what we tell people to do. We're not having people run in and throw firecrackers like some places do, you know, because that's foolish. You don't need to go to that level. That's the alarmist level. But students and staff and everybody need to know what to do if. So if you're in a classroom, it's great, but what happens now if you're out in the hallway? What happens if you're in the bathroom? You know, how do you respond? So just like somebody can respond in an evacuation, right? I know, every time that a fire alarm went off, me and my teacher got up and I followed them out the door. I know that now I'm in this bathroom, and I'm, you know, a fifth grader or a sixth grader, and I hear this lockdown call, and I go out, and now nobody's in the hallway, I'm gonna go back in the bathroom and I'm gonna knock. Because that's where we are today, and that's how we have to think about it. It's safety as a mindset, but it's letting people know that also, there's a very, very small chance that there's gonna be a school shooter in this building. Right? The last data that I went through, 1 in 6,000 chance there's a school shooter in your school. 20 times likely to be shot in a restaurant, 50 times likely to be shot at your house. I tell people, you're not afraid to go home. Never should be afraid to go to school. Right? The schools are one of the safest places because of all these people and all these plans that we have in place. You know, and that's the safety mindset, is understanding what the true risk and what the true hazard is, and responding in kind. But to not train them to the level of understanding what those drills are, again, age-appropriate, is a, is a dangerous or, you know, even a foolish way to go about it. And I always caution people is, you know, we wanna protect our kids, we wanna, you know, grow them, but we also have to be realistic. You know, so the idea of, okay, we have five protective actions, what do you do in those protective actions? So like I said, that's why, you know, we talk about staying away from the window, you know, if you, you know, get down, be quiet, silence your cellphones, that type of stuff. That, to me, is safety as a mindset. Alarmist is freaking them out to the point that they can't function. You know, we talk about fight, flight, and freeze, we never want anybody to freeze. We always want people to be able to function in that mindset of safety when the action is called and when they need to do the action. The same thing if they were at their house. You know, you're at your house, and you see something, you know, there's a bad guy in your house, what are you gonna do? You're gonna hide, you're gonna try to get out. You know, that's where we want, that's where eventually we wanna go. It's not a pleasant thing to think about, but unfortunately, that's where we are in 2019. That's my advice when it comes to that. And that's what we've seen all over the place. You know, the more we can talk about it, and the more we don't make it a stigma, I think it helps, you know, especially when we start to drill this a little bit more authentically, and we talk to kids about what they can do and what they should be doing in the event that something happens.
And if I may, too, I think, we had some feedback from one of our parents, just within the past three hours, from one of the kindergarten students, asking how things went, and their response was, that was fine, or everything was okay, I was more concerned about the flu shot coming up today, which happened to be today. So that just speaks to, our teachers did a wonderful job of preparing the kids, and once it was all said and done, too, that we made sure they had, I think, a dab after the fact. But that just speaks to the amount of time and effort that our teachers, our staff, that we collectively just have those conversations that are developmentally appropriate, that aren't to the extreme, but that make sure that if it were when it happens, that it records itself. I think that's probably some of the best data that we can get.
Yeah? Any other questions?
Flu shots are terrifying. Okay, let's move on.
Okay. So, reunification at a glance. So I just wanted to give you a little background on reunification, kinda where it came from. So the National Standard for Reunification comes out of the I Love You Guys Foundation. And I put that picture up there, and again, I don't do it for shock value, I do it actually as a nod to them. So they lost their daughter in a school violence action, event. Basically, someone shot her, and her last message she sent was, I love you guys. The daughter's name was Emily, so the parents turned their grief into this positive work. They did all this research, national research, onto how to properly do a reunification, get everybody back home safe and sound, and to minimize the mental health and all the other effects that can go with it. It's a great system. The only problem with the system is based on a county school model, which we don't have. They require somewhere around 95 people to run a beneficial reunification. So we had to change it, and we talked about Garrison-specific, right? So, you know, on our best day, we don't, I don't know that we could pull 95 people unless we start pulling the 80% or more, you know, like, that's just one of the things. So we have to think about what that does. But we have a shared goal, and that goal is to get kids home safe. We talked about priorities, priorities, get the kids home safe. However we can affect that, that's what we do. So, when we look at the Garrison reunification, I'm gonna let Laura and Alex speak a little bit more to it, but I can just tell you my piece. You know, the idea of reunification is, again, getting people home safe, whatever that means, that's the ultimate goal. If it's putting them on a bus, great, if it's putting, you know, if it's having the parents come and pick them up, great. We know a lot of things about it, we, the things that we know is, we always want to, are we always mindful of custody during a reunification event? That's one of the pieces that's always highlighted, is that during an reunification event, you always wanna make sure that you're releasing the appropriate parent or the appropriate guardian, or whatever it might be, because there have been issues where a non-custodial parent or someone that wasn't supposed to be there, did try to grab a student, which can, again, talk about instant stabilization, that can destabilize an incident very, very quickly. The other thing we talk about is the idea that we want kind of a circuitous path, you come in one way and you kinda go out the other way, you know, just to kinda keep everything moving. The other thing that we know, again, national guidance, is for a non-violent, non-fatal event on school grounds, five hours to reunify. And it really is, you know, it doesn't really matter how many students. I think you guys were a little under that time, I don't remember the exact time off the top of my head, but for 46 students, it was, I mean, it was pretty significant time, whatever it might be, when the last student was picked up. So, those are a lot of things that what we know. When I showed up, one of the things that I noticed, everybody was smiling, so that's always a good sign. People were in good spirits, plan seemed to work out, you know, everybody was happy. The students were happy, you know, they were eating snacks, they were playing basketball. Those were some of the things that I saw that went right, and I thought was really great. I don't know if you guys wanna jump in and highlight any pieces that you saw from your end?
Some positive highlights, when we found out that this incident happened, we didn't know the whole story, but we knew that it was going to impact transportation. So we made sure that we brought in transportation, Michael, Alex and myself, okay, how is this gonna impact our kids getting home during the day? And that, it's around 11 o'clock or 12 o'clock, because we knew that this was gonna be a plan that's gonna take us throughout the day. And then as we were working on that, we're also working on communication with parents if we're getting the plan. And then we brought in the reunionification team, say, okay, what is this gonna look like when we can't have two, two buses cannot bring the students home? So how are we going to contact parents and sort of bring them through the reunification? And while we're holding kids, who's gonna be taking care of those children, making sure that they're supervised? And how are parents gonna be picked, how are they gonna pick their child up in a uniform, methodical manner where we are assigning their child out, being put into the car? Alex was the first to welcome, so leadership, and this came out of the reunification team. They're welcomed by leadership, they're directed by the team, they end with leadership saying, with a, like, everything's gonna be okay, have a good night, and make sure that we communicate what's going on later on in the evening. So I, and so I felt like the transportation, the communication, and reunification worked really well. The piece in communication, I think, where we can do better was that we sent out an email. We did not send out a phone call or a text. And so, moving forward, we're going to do that, but we also, in the analysis, when we're running the tech, our technologist Nancy, she did an analysis of our tool, and we realized that some parents intentionally or unintentionally blocked their emails, unsubscribed or blocked their texts. So they would have not, they didn't get that communication. So, we're, we're gonna, we've reached out to parents, I don't know if it was in Cougar Corner yet, where, to look at their, to look at their account, so to subscribe again and unblock their text if they'd like. We've also found a way where maybe we can circumvent it in the tool, to make sure that everybody is, gets the information they need, and they know what's going on. So, that was one hitch that I think...
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
At this point, then, you're not in a situation where you're able to say, oh, I can't get to the school, but I'm gonna let you pick up my kids. At that point, you stop that, and they have to be released to the custodial parent or an emergency contact, or like, do you let a grandparent show up? How?
We stuck to the school dismissal manager plan. No changes, we were going with that. There was no picking up, I'm gonna pick up my neighbor's kids and these kids and bring them to the art center of the library or home. Whatever was in the school dismissal manager is what we...
You could do.
What we...
And so, did that prove an issue at any point for parents? Did you have people try and come get a group of kids, or was that not...
They emailed.
They emailed to try?
And they said, you're in the middle of a reunification plan, there are no changes.
Okay.
And within that, are there, you know, I think there are, if I remember correctly, there's names of people that are authorized to pick up the child, right?
There are, but not in the school dismissal, it says how they're getting home. By 2 o'clock, we need to know how every child is getting home.
Right, right.
So then there are no changes. But if there's an emergency in school and we can't get the parent, there is another person.
Right.
But that was not in, not put to play at that time.
Okay, so, here's the scenario I'm thinking about, maybe you can help out here, is the, let's say you have to reunify at noon. Both parents work in the city. They don't, they're supposed to pick them up, but they can't get here. Someone shows up, Uncle Charlie, he's not on the list, what do we do?
So can I tell you what I would do?
Yeah, you can. I mean, I'm not putting anyone on the spot.
No, no, I have no problem.
It's a reality.
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you what I would advise. I would say if they're not on that list, then I would not release, you know, unless you can get positive confirmation. So, and I don't know what positive confirmation is, so I do this a lot of different districts, and custody is like a big issue, you know?
Huge.
I'll be honest, I'll be honest. What we have done is, we've advised them, you know, to say, you really have to figure out what your custody release is, right? So to me, when I hear like the school dismissal manager, if I'm hearing that correctly, like, to me, that's good, because that's solid, that's in place. You know, the school is prepared to take care of that kid for five hours or 10 hours if they need to, and I would prefer that, being a 10,000-foot objective view, than to say like, alright, we're gonna take a chance that Uncle Charlie's okay. But I'm in so many districts that I see so many family custodial issues, that as soon as you say that, like, my red flag goes, they're not on the list.
We don't know who Uncle Charlie is.
Yeah, and if I...
But we do have telephones, right? So I mean, if the parents are in New York and they call to say, Uncle, we love Uncle Charlie, that's not okay?
I would, I would, again, caution, right? Because if you don't know that parent, like, if I don't know your voice, you know, and I, like, I've seen it with kids, when I was teaching, I saw it with kids, like, oh, yeah, my mom's gonna call, and it's like, hold the road.
Can I give a counter, Devla? Who are you calling? Are you calling the secretary who has 1,400 phone calls coming in at the time? And how's this secretary supposed to transmit this information so quickly that we're operating smoothly? So I guess there's a question of, how many names get to be on that dismissal, so that we can safely say Uncle Charlie's okay, because he's on the emergency dismissal? Or if Courtney is gonna pick up David's kids, Courtney's name's on that list, so that she's an eligible pickup?
So the lesson that we learned to that end is, in schools that we've done reunifications for, is that all, now, there's, you know, parents are saying, you know what, we're gonna think about our list a little bit differently. We're gonna think about our neighbors and our cul-de-sac people, because, you know, again, you know, I gotta mitigate, and I'm not working for the dad, he will pick up six kids. You know? But if that's not set in stone, I just question that piece, because it gets me nervous, I'll be honest.
Two last minutes.
Yeah, two last minutes, that's when things start to fall apart.
Right, exactly. Exactly, I get that. I totally get that.
And moving forward, and that's where I think we talk about, you know, maybe in here, you know, we talk about what, you know, what you can do in emergency. You know, we talk about keeping the emergency, you know, communication up and that type of stuff because that's important. Let's say it is eight o'clock and let's say there's another crisis that's impacting, right? The school may say, we have four kids, we may have to try to give somebody a call and figure this out.
Right.
Or, you know, so if, if people don't have that information up to date, that also hinders the process. You know, and that's really what I would look at. Like, you know, again, we, this is a lesson learned in the past couple of years for us, is just figuring out who should be on that list. You know, Grandma that's in, you know, two counties over might be the best person to be on the emergency contact list. Maybe she can't get here in time.
Yeah, I do that.
And the less people.
Guilty of that.
Oh.
And we feel too that the less people on the road allows us to do what we need to do to get kids home safely.
Yeah.
And just one piece with the communication piece, what we've decided was that we will send out a text and a phone call to say, please look at your, your email as well as the website because that's also where we posted instructions.
Maybe like school emergencies, please see your email for instructions.
Yeah, yeah. So, because we can't, we can only have a certain amount of characters on the text. I think it'll do 22, something like that. And only so long on the voicemails. But we can at least direct people to the information that they need to know so they know where their child is.
Something in the interest of making sure that all the contact information is updated or just when we all, when we release all of the schedules and information on our parent portal and it first force everyone to log in and first verify all contact information. That's the, Nancy worked very hard with us to just, for that reason, make sure that we do it each year at the very least, everyone's checking that address. And there's still some things that are incorrect, but at the very least, everyone's reviewing their emergency contacts, those lists of if you are unable to resell and sell. So that was something we did in August that at this time now, it came to handy that our information is, forget the day, not perfect, but.
I didn't mean to interrupt Alex. My, I think the communication piece is huge, Mills, because people are relying on their cell phones in a way that they didn't used to. And if you're at the store and say, hey, did you hear blah, blah, blah? They will call, because they may not know the color of the bus, because they're not walking around memorizing the color of the bus. Maybe they should, right? But they don't necessarily know the color of the bus. So the question is, okay, I'm gonna figure out if my kid is on that bus because I don't remember the color. So I call the school along with everybody else. So I think the question is, is, you know, one of the questions that we have is sort of maximize the amount of outflow so they're not impacting the inflow. Does that make any sense?
It does.
If the clearer the expression of the communication, the fullness or richness of that communication, the less likely they're gonna seek information. And when they don't get it, they're not gonna, well, I'm gonna try by the school anyway, so I'll just stop it and ask. Because we have a very informal, I would say a very informal school in many ways. It does feel like a place you can drop in sometimes, you know, and just ask. Or to wing it or something.
And I, but I think, you know, to that end, if, if the school does opt to use the cellphone, you know, the text messages and say to check your email, that's where that robust communication can be and live. So at least I know I got my text, I gotta check my email, you know? And that's, I think, the big piece. But, you know, having also the parents buy into this is the method of communication that we're using. It's one of the big things that we do, you know, that's done at the federal level, we always talk about is what are your avenues of communication and are people to use them? You know, so when people are blocking the emails from Garrison or however that, you know, whatever we figure it out, that's another just a piece that we have to figure, you know, get around.
Yeah, what, I hope it goes without saying that if whatever the, you know, this committee feels is necessary to communicate or to improve their already, it seems to me, very well-planned performance, feel free to ask for it. You know, I hope that people feel like they can come to the board and say, we need this and you approve this in order to make things happen. If it needs board approval, please feel free to come. I just want to express that. I mean, obviously, based upon what you're saying, it seems to me that this particular team is doing a really good job with the planning and, you know, they're kind of exemplar in some ways, right?
In a lot of ways. I guess I mean that.
It's a, it's a source of pride that we can say that. And, you know, and it's great that the school is able to respond accordingly. But if there's any need for improvement or technology or something that you need, feel free to ask for it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, I don't want to labor, so let's move on.
No, it's all right. So I mean, communication was our next piece, which I think we hit for the most part. And then our work just with the community partnerships, you know? I mean, again, we have a partnership or, you know, I'm here from Bosie's. But, you know, even just with our first responders, you know, one of the things that we started doing a couple of years ago is inviting them to the buildings. You know, they've attended some of the safety meetings and stuff like that. So that's important. You know, we're looking to even expand that further because like you talk about all these different types of scenarios that we can run into. You know, what do we need to support the school community, you know? And I mean, just off the top of my head, one of the things that always, that I think about is food for a lot of reasons. But one of the reasons is response. But, you know, here, you don't have what other schools have. You know, you don't have a lot of food on hand.
This is interesting.
You know, so it's just one of those things to think about. So what does that look like? You know, is that just maybe having some extra snacks in the kids' rooms or, you know, but if you were at a prolonged event, you know, and there was traffic issues and, I mean, you know, I don't know how many candy bars are in that gas station or, you know, if we go down that road to that restaurant or whatever's down there. But that's just something I'm thinking about. You know, we, when we sit down as a group, we talk about these, these issues and, you know, we try to balance the low probability scenarios with the high probabilities. Right, so there's a low probability scenario that we're gonna be at an extended shelter in place for more than eight hours, okay? But like I said, if you take that microburst from lunch here or whenever, you know, I mean, you know, I sit on the board, the Putnam County Emergency Operations Center. We had people that were stuck at Kent Primary or Kent Elementary because the trees went down on 50. You know, so that's just things that, you know, to think about as we move forward. You know, what does that mean? How can we just help stabilize our response? You know, and that's our next steps and we're, you know, that's something for a little bit later on or further conversation. But we have to figure out what our community relationships are. You know, what's our relationship to the library? What's our relationship, you know, across the street and other places around here? Because one of the biggest things that I see as a problem in this region, not just talking Garrison or Putnam County, but even Putnam and Westchester County, and this is like my, my big mantra is everybody has mutual aid except for really schools, like true mutual aid. You know, if we have an issue, you know, in, in, you know, Carmel or whatever, the Putnam County Sheriff's, they're mutually with Carmel Police, mutually with other agencies, you know, why can't schools do that? You know, and I'm just starting the conversation by saying here, and I say that.
Can you explain that concept?
Yeah, so, you know, if you have a crisis take place.
Right.
Whatever that crisis may be, it's gonna tax your resources, right? The larger the crisis, the bigger the tax, right? So if your resources are being taxed and you're trying to help with life safety, now trying to keep everything stable is falling by the wayside, right? So just to give you, for instance, the event that happened, you know, last two weeks ago, right? We had a, you know, Laura's talking, I mean, when Laura talks, and if you don't know Garrison, you think you have all these team members, you know, but these are teachers that you're pulling, these are, you know, these are resources. A TA that's doing this, somebody else that's doing that, right? That's taxing the resources. So what does mutual aid look like? Well, all right, I have a kid that I'm a one-on-one with, I'm gonna put in with this counselor so this counselor can watch the kid while I jump in, right? So that's at a very, very local level. But what happens a little bit bigger than that, you know? We have Haldane, we have this, and it's an unwritten idea that yes, I can call them for help and they can call us for help. But let's think about what that really means in the event of a true crisis or emergency. If we needed to do X, what, how can they provide Y? You know, and this is, I mean, this is, you know, frankly, very philosophical right now talking a little bit higher level, but it's just something that I think we need to really explore our relationships with local places and in school districts.
Okay.
And then with that being said, any other questions? Any questions? Yes?
Aside from the communication, which it sounds like you talked about, there are lots of, it's been two weeks ago, was there anything else the team learned or feels like they would like to implement should we have an incident similar impacting transportation call and reunification again in the future?
I think one thing that we, that we've discussed is, we've discussed it at meetings, but it's just faster activation of the emergency response team. And I think we did activate the, a sub-team very quickly, but there's always the, and we did, I would say like Laura said, by about 12 o'clock we had done so. But you always think that, it doesn't really hurt, but to Frank's point too, I think a unique challenge we have too is to make sure that we can continue with, especially in the middle of the school day, to make sure we don't completely disrupt what's going on within the school itself. But I think that was one takeaway in our, in our deep read that we had discussed going forward.
Yeah, that level of information sharing too. You know, I mean, I think just getting people on the same page quicker to say, okay, let's think about, you know, 12 o'clock lunch, there's that, you know? That's always, and that's always gonna be an issue. I mean, I think we just, we have to, we can work to ways to mitigate that. It's just figuring out what that is and it's a little more of a kind of struggle.
I think one thing I learned is, you know, as it sort of happened by, or happened by during the crisis is that my car was on the road, creating more problems. So I pulled off the road and walked to the school. But, you know, this was a situation where the team, it was, you know, you had to operate under the assumption there was a car accident, it's interrupting this bus traffic. And then we, when we found out that a member of the community was involved, there was another set of protocols. So we had a complication. So we had two kinds of emergencies we had to respond to, which required different sets of protocols that might actually involve members of the team.
Correct. The mental health.
Yep.
The mental health team.
So if the, it's like the mental health team is deployed in this emergency area, how are we gonna handle this new thing?
And teachers.
And that's very complicated. Because we have, we don't have a lot of people.
And it's not, it's the family, of course, but then staff members are affected, peers are affected. And then kids might have just heard about it, read about it, and are maybe a little elevated when they come in the next day as well. So it's multiple layers of anxiety, concern, and some kids just didn't, and didn't know either. So it's making sure that staff knows what the plan is, who's to support, who's going to impact directly, teacher-wise, kid-wise. And then it kind of pulls out to a larger scope.
And we have, I mean, not that it's immediate, but, you know, in the region, there's a regional crisis team, administrative regional crisis team that are here to help support the mental health efforts, you know, and some of the administrative efforts. But again, you know, I mean, I, I would say, I think it took me about an hour and a half to get here, you know, which would normally take 20 minutes just because of traffic. You know, so, I mean, again, we don't have the resources on site, but the resources could get here if something needs to be. So it's just something, I mean, it's there, it's just, it's not an ideal situation, you know? So that's, again, it's always gonna be people in manpower, you know, is what we'll need.
Right.
Have you suggested strategizing in this situation or others, going, sort of going back to the communication piece? At what point do you release the information? Do you, is it more important to get out a little bit of information to the community, to parents to say, there's something going on, but we don't know yet, we can't tell you yet? Or do you pull back, do you not say anything until you have all the facts, the reunification plan in place, know what you're going to do? Which one is better?
So, yeah, and it's, it's, sometimes you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. I'll be honest with you, right? So one of the, it's probably the best way I could say it, you know? So again, one of the things that we do is we do, do train public information officers. And we give, and we have national statistics, right? So the rules that we go hard and fast by is you never want to compromise your integrity or the truth, right? So if you don't have it, you have to say you don't have it or you can't release it. Does that make community members happy? Usually not, to be honest with you, you know? We try to get out pertinent information. What complicates things is when there's a death or a mental health type of issue. You know, for a reunification event, and I, I, and I don't want to sound crass, right? But a reunification event is sometimes easier, right? Because, all right, we have an accident, you know, if there was no fatality involved or anything like that, you can put information out like, you know, at this point, you know, there was an accident, we will follow up with information. And you give a hard and fast deadline for a follow-up of information. That's the other piece of guidance we did. What further complicates it is just because you have such a personal, like schools have a personal connection, right? If I'm a government agency and I'm doing an evacuation or there was a mass casualty event, there's no personal connection. So I can tell you that I'm not gonna give out any more information than I, it doesn't matter to me what you say to me. Does that make sense? You know, and I don't want, like I said, I don't want to sound crass, but that's where they're coming from when they give their guidance. Unfortunately, we're in the school in the business of people, so we have to take people to business as we can. So, and I, you know, I hate not to give an official answer, but what I would say to people is it's a case-by-case basis. And you really have to look at the case and what you're dealing with. And again, I facilitate our regional crisis team and, I mean, I'm not making this number up, I know it's at least above 25 fatalities that I've dealt with in the past two years. And there was 25 different responses. You know, some were similar, but not, none of them were the same, and I can say that. So that's one of the things that I would, I would say is I know we never want to give out erroneous information, so I tell people, you know, my secretary will tell me this because you might notice it, you have to slow me down sometimes, but she tells me, a delay is better than a disaster, you know? And that's, that's an important piece to remember, you know? So when we're getting information out, because once you put out erroneous information, your credibility is shot. And that's a lesson learned nationally, you know, after Katrina and all these crazy storms, like that's what was destroying the, the, the theme is credibility was they were putting out erroneous information. So that's, that's like one of the hard and fast commands is you never put anything out, you know, erroneous. The other thing is just balancing, you know? So that was that situation. So, you know, it was, and again, do I think that anybody had a bad intention? No. You know, they, they really didn't. We, we know they had good intentions, but in doing that, it destabilizes the situation.
Right. That was one of our struggles was making sure that we're respected in the confidentiality alley of the family. So we are in a place where we want to communicate with the community because we are so small and care about one another, but we also want to be mindful of what his family's going through and, and to respect and again, that.
Right. I think that's important. As well as, you know, if we, if the teachers impacted by the tragedy are supposed to be functioning, you know, as emergency responders in a way, you need them to be clear-eyed so you might want to reserve information from them so that you're not telling them something that's very difficult to hear when they're supposed to be doing a very particular job to make sure that other people are safe. So it's a, it's very much a judgment call.
And I'll be, I'll be honest with you, I mean, this situation, I mean, again, my advice is don't, you know, don't release until you've heard from, you know, the parent because, again, you don't know what people know and it's just, you don't want, you know, you don't want a further complicated situation, especially with my folks trying to care for everybody in this terrible tragedy.
Right. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Bosie's, you and Lynn Allen were a great, great help and all of us.
Maybe it's a good time to thank the team. Could you name them all or?
Name them all.
We tried, we did pretty good.
How about the team?
The team. We're the response team. I mean, they responded, they were focused, I mean, everybody was in my office doing what they needed to do and using all of the training and implementing it into the transportation, the reunification, the collaboration, the communication. It was amazing to be a part of and to, to see it in action. It's an unfortunate event, of course, but we, we can do this, you know? When we can respond in a strategic and methodical way to ensure the safety and the functioning of our school when something tragic happens, whether it's small or large.
Can you lay out for the board, because I didn't understand Beth's role with the team? Can you lay that out?
I'm the planning section. I'm a note saver and describe, and I have, look up something that happened and who did it, what time it was done. I've got it somewhere in my office. So maybe.
She keeps the notes of everyone's actions so that when we can go over, the team can go over and see what had happened. So-and-so did this at this time, so-and-so did this at this time. It helps create a kind of monitoring of your own performance. And I think that record is, is probably, and when I came in, Beth reassured me that things were okay. And I felt better, so.
And that's what we did with the lockdown today. We all meet with Beth and we say, okay, these are the things that, well, these are the things we need to pay attention next time, these are the things, the fixes that we need to do for the next practice of lockdown or evacuation. Barbara's part of the team, she's our safety officer. And Sue's part of the team, Alex, myself, Debbie, Sally, Melissa H., Melissa D.
Mike, Brian.
Mike, Brian.
Right.
And so Jessica Krista.
Jessica Krista, Nicole. Nancy Lamano, technology and communication.
Pretty much the whole school.
Yeah.
It's a significant amount, yeah.
I'm very proud.
If I could just, I was a very proud dad that day. It was like, I mean, it really was, you know, in a tragic situation, but it was, you know, I really, really stepped out.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
You too. And safe drive.
Thank you.
Presidential remarks that we make. Congratulations to, I guess, or in order to the public for voting in the PISA project. The public supported the referendum in the past. You know, a little disappointed as a fan of democracy with the turnout, have to say. I'd like to see more people participating, whether they're approving or disapproving of anything. It's very important for the public to show up and voice their concerns and their approval. But the majority voiced their approval and the, with the bond that the board had floated, which is an affirmation of the commitment of the community towards the school district. So cheers to the, to the school, cheers to the community for supporting the school. And I think you'll probably, probably like some things later. Yeah, so, let's see. So we, November 23rd, board members, please put down that we are retreating with Haldane to learn about evaluating ourselves, which is a good thing to do. Also, Haldane, Haldane is going through a strategic planning process and Jen Daly has reached out to involve the Garrison board if they want in sharing their ideas about strategic planning and possible goals. Obviously, some of our students attend Haldane, so there's a vested relationship there. And I think they would like our input. Levi forwarded an email to somebody, to all of you. Feel free to participate. In that, I would call on our liaison to Haldane.
That's me.
Yeah, to step on it and make sure that, ear to the ground. O'Neill liaison, we're going to, is a, I met with Ann Lawless and she pressed on about how great Garrison students are, and she definitely wants us to be engaged as much as possible. They enjoyed Jim Cannon's presence for a number of years. Jim was a special human being. And not everybody has the flexibility to be there. Jim was a special human being, and not everybody has the flexibility to be there, but if any board member is interested in engaging O'Neill more deeply, I'm sure that Courtney could, you could wrestle the liaison this away from Courtney.
Sure.
Yeah. So, but if there's someone who's really interested in getting to know that district, being the liaison for O'Neill is a good way to do it. I recommend that all the public invite you again to enjoy the benefits of committee membership. Whether you're a parent, community member, a board member, please try to find a way to be part of whatever committees are available to you. And that's it for now. Superintendent?
Yeah, great, thank you. Yeah, just on the PISA, I wanted to give a special thank you shout-out to the PISA Capital Project Team. Sue, Michael, Beth, and Alex, who, and Beth, who spent hours, years on planning, budgeting, presenting, creating informational materials, coordinating schedule, and more, to see this vote go through, but also it was definitely a family affair. Those who came out to vote, thank you very much. To the Garrison staff, we've had multiple meetings talking about what we need here at the school, what will enhance the educational experience for our kids, as well as optimal educational environment for all who enter the art doors. To Tetra Tech, Garrett and Rich, our engineers and architects. BOC's Communication Department, so working with Fiona Mitchell and Ellen Lane with the video, the e-newsletters, the newsletters, all of the materials they helped to sort of, to promote and inform the community so that they can make an informed decision when they did vote. Community members throughout the years who attended walkthroughs, set questions, attended forums, presentations, much appreciated.
All the way up to the bitter end.
Facilities, committees, of course, the Board of Education, and thank you for being at presentations, we really appreciate it. The board presence, it was very helpful to have a different lens at the table as well. So again, it was a, it was a community-wide project and excited about the next, next part of this journey.
Yeah, thanks, you know, I know that I wasn't a facilities kid any, you know, semi-faithfully most of the time, but, and tried to keep up with it as much as I could when I wasn't, but I just wanted to say that, you know, that the facilities committee did a, it's taken years to make this happen, you know, it's a lot of meetings, and it took years, a lot of planning, and so, a big congratulations to those members of the facilities committee and for the stewardship on that. I think it's important not to, I don't think it underscored enough, we don't, we don't have a lot of bonds. We don't float a lot of bonds. The last bond was about 20 years ago, right? Eight, 17 years ago, 18 years ago, something like that, right? It doesn't happen often in the history of Garrison that we go for an ask, and I think it's a real, it's a historic moment. It's a big deal, and I'm glad we had the outcome we had, and I think it's well deserved. So congratulations.
And a thank you to Mr. Dowron too from Turner.
Yeah.
David, have a resolution for his laptop.
What else do you have?
I have, I guess, and one more. The climate strike. I wanted to send out a kudo, a thank you and a shout-out to Crystal Four, really supportive that climate strike is a great supporter of our climate change resolution, as well as we do other things like Forest Fridays and the Green Machine, but this was an opportunity for kids to further engage in relevant and authentic experiences for discussion and to find solutions to environmental issues that we're having. So I thought it was a great way to support the resolution. And I saw Kyo over there, and Maya spoke, and she did a wonderful job, and I saw you were there, and your children, and your wife was there, and your children, you were there, and your children. So I thought that was a nice, that was a call-in anyway.
One of the, one of the things that would be great would be if issues involving climate were mainstreamed into the normal events that occur in school life. So that, for instance, this question of catastrophic events or emergency events, which is, they're thought of as very discreet, low probability events, but there are lots and lots of ways in which, in which what's happening in the climate actually endangers kids and their parents and all of us in the community. And it would be useful in a, in a general conversation about threats to the community that if climate were included as one of the elements that people would understand this is kind of like that.
That's a threat. Yeah, that's a threat, yeah.
Or the specific was about climate that could impact this, and that are impacting this community.
Timely enough, and there's microbursts a part of it.
Yeah, well, that, you know, there are lots of issues.
Today's the hottest one.
I put us to integrate that kind of, that kind of information in regular operation of the school communications efforts.
Excellent. Are you good?
Hi.
Yeah, I think that's a discussion I, okay. Principal remark?
Good evening, everyone. I will be brief in that we take a lot of our time discussing so many important matters.
Man with guitar.
Kids first. This was thanking to Ms. Ricky, Ms. Katz, and Mr. Connors. In the first few weeks of school, had a few opportunities, and I'll kind of do the same all right in the elementary courtyard.
This is our new music teacher, Mr. Connor, right? Excellent switcher.
Yes, yes. And as I said, we're here for the kids, so appreciate all of your support and work in their best interest, as well as our staff, of course, and everyone in the school, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item seven, Treasury report?
Yep.
You're up.
I have the July report. This is because we canceled the last meeting in September, so the August and probably September reports will be in the next meeting.
Okay.
So it's sort of like history, but I'll go over it. We started out the month of July in the multi-fund with $4,397,13439, had interest basically of $3,19277, and a transfer to the, these are investment accounts, they're an investment accounts, transferred to the multi-fund of $400,000. So we ended up the month with $400, $4,32716. And in the multi-fund, we started out with $1,215,97278. Overall, had the tran, including the transfer, $539,74461 in revenues and expenses of just over $500,000, so we ended up the month at $1,184,43631.
Very exact.
Yes.
Okay, so we have to accept this, right?
Yes.
So we need a motion to accept the Treasury report July 19th.
So moved.
Second, be resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison University School District accepts the Treasury report for July 2019 as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it, and it is accepted. Budgets, tax, warrant reports. Is this as usual?
This is as usual, unless you have any questions. I'll move right on to budget transfer that has to be approved, that's $12,000. Again, this is just, we're of course, this is setting up all our anticipated purchase orders for the year, most of them anyway. These are the accounts that I saw that needs, have, you know, coverage in expenses.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the budget transfer. So moved. Second, be resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison University School District approves budget transfer number two in the amount of $12,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. One question about warrant. First of all, Sue, you know, thank you again for dealing with the issues regarding taxation and shifting the taxes due to miscalculations at the county and/or state level.
Oh, are you talking about the warrant for here or just the tax part?
I just wanted to thank you for the tax part.
Oh, no. I was looking at the warrant, but I don't think it's a tax.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, it's been, it's been a little crazy.
I know you're still working on it, correct?
And I want to say I'm in the same boat with many tax collectors in the county. It's, it's been a lot of work, but I think it's, people have been kind, have been kind back. It's just a state of confusion. I think it's been very confusing. The problem, you know, with Garrison, not the problem, but I mean, what's happened here is we have a lot of our taxpayers paid, they're calling me in August normally to know what the amounts are, if I even get the tax bills. So our taxpayers pay very early, so there's, we had quite a big number of taxpayers that paid before the new taxes came out, so they have to be refunded, and we're working on that in the business office, just so you, to put that in reference, we have to put in everybody as a vendor and then issue them a check, and some of the checks are as little as 17 cents, and some are as much as about $200. But that takes time, and we have a small staff, so I told people that the checks will be out by the end of October, and then there's, there was hundreds of checks that were sent in that weren't deposited that had to be sent back. So still in the process of doing that, and, you know, normally at this point, we probably normally collect about 80 to 85% of our taxes, which for us is about $8 million, and as of yesterday, we collected just over a million. So, you know, just to put that in perspective with the board is that, you know, we're eight, seven million in the hole, and glad we have a healthy fund balance, because we don't, we didn't have to go out and borrow money to pay the bills, basically. But the money's coming in now, because people have gotten their correct tax bills and they are paying them, but there are a lot of people that are waiting until they receive their check that they originally sent out, and, and for us, that's a large number. Most of our taxpayers do pay early, that's.
I know this came up in one of the committees.
I can hear you.
It came up in one of the committees that the banks, if you pay through the bank, like it's attached to your repayment comes as part of the mortgage, the banks pay later, is that correct? So it doesn't like need to be affected.
Yeah, the banks normally don't send out until the very last day, so they were informed immediately, so there was, most they didn't pay, and they haven't paid yet because now it's been extended.
They're going to wait till the end.
So that's another whole group of money that normally you would have had by now.
Well, if the, if superintendent feels that the board needs to voice their concern about the status of this continued miscalculation year after year, if we need to voice something, please do, let us know, okay? Whatever you think is an appropriate action that we should consider, please let us know, okay?
All right.
Thank you. Moving on, consent agenda here. Be resolved, the Board of Education, I need a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
I'm second.
Okay. Be resolved that the Board of Education, Garrison University School District approves the consent agenda items B through J. Any questions regarding items B through J? There's a.
What's E?
What's D is amended resignation of a custodial person that's retiring and wanted to delay the retirement by a week or so, so we've approved this previously, but they decided not so fast, want to stick around for another week, for two, so they would like to, they changed their mind for a week or two.
They had a retirement requirement of time.
Right. They needed two weeks, two more weeks of work in order to make a number, so we were the school flex, so we're going to be doing that. And that's the appointment of the cleaner is to change the start date for that person as well.
And then, I was gonna say, did you have BOCs?
I did, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to the BOCs.
Okay, so what is, what is your question?
Well, I, I think it would be helpful to, because the BOCs contract is for a substantial amount of a budget, it would be useful to just sort of highlight what this does for us as a district, how it's different from the other contracts, such as the physical therapy services contract, also approved, and who it affects, and, yeah, but it's taxpayer money, let's go.
Small thing.
Yeah, and there's a lot, and maybe Sue and Alex can help me with this as well, just about the BOCs contract. This particular one, though, I believe, is the Lower Hudson Information Center cross contract that you see here, so this is more technology-driven.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a lot of our. Yes, our tools, our e-school data.
Smashmap, anything.
Blackboard, Wixie, our model schools, although we have moved it now to PNW BOCs. So this one goes more to Rick and Sue and Nancy, we're closely with them, both creating this, this budget. But then with BOCs itself, multi-layered, it's shared services so that we don't feel the full impact or need to fully fund programs that we would otherwise probably not be able to afford. So through the 18 component partners, we're able to have a post PNW BOCs, and that's where we share services. So we have, I just made a quick list, the social-emotional workshops, so that's our dialectical behavior, our therapeutic crisis, our Yale ruler that we just adopted, and PBIS. So that's where we get trade, staff training, so that we're able to implement in a smooth fashion over time. Then there's, we work with, for our literacy district, for our literacy district priority, there's words and advice, so they're funneled through BOCs as well. So that's Melanie and Holly, who've been working with our K-8 teachers in creating a robust, scaffolded curriculum across grades. Student online tools with Wixie, special education services, and that's really the heavy lift there with BOCs, because we use their services, their programs, their evaluation, our student placement, so a lot of our funding goes in that direction. We use Environmental Education Center, so that's where our Science 21 curriculum comes from, and that includes training and materials and resources, as well as things like the Green Machine, they'll come here and that funnels through that. A lot of our, all of our PISA Communication Departments, you'll see a rise probably in cost in BOCs, because we use them heavily to help promote the PISA projects, to make sure that everybody is informed. And then I have trainings, we use DASA training, the DigniACT training, Childabees training, Section Pass harassment training. There's leadership programs that both Alex and I are involved in, such as the Curriculum Council and H Human Resources Boot Camp, there are multiple sessions. Safety and security, so folks like Frank Bugliari and Lynn Allen, who's Assistant Superintendent there, we use their services, support, trainings, workshops, his onsite presence and guidance, that is all falls under PNW BOCs, and things like OLOS, which is the online application system. So when we have, we're a staff member, we post that position, and teacher aides, transportation, custodial, teachers can post their certification, resume, cover letters, education, and that too. So it's like a plethora of services that we use.
Basically, it's sort of is a, it's a bunch of services that if we were to do in-house or to do piecemeal would cost, you know.
Yeah, they do it. You see taxpayer money by contracting through.
Right. We contract with them, and it's, you know, fairly well-priced and, you know, it serves us well. It does, because of the size of the contract, it does, it's due diligence for the board members to really vet it and understand its function, so.
And again, just to, BOCs folks will come here and talk about their services, the funding, more in-depth if you would like, but we, as an administrative team, come together multiple times during the year to say, okay, are the decisions that we're making, are they supporting our district priorities? Are they supporting our teachers as a whole and individually? Are they, are we addressing the needs that we have identified in our students? And so we, we use all of that information and data collected to inform the services and the funding that we put into PNW BOCs.
Okay. All right, does that sound good?
I, I just want to, you just said aid on services in PNW BOCs. I remember it was around between 30 and 36%, and the aid comes next year, so any services that we did last year, we created that came and is coming here, that's how that.
Does that come from the state then? The aid?
I guess indirectly it does, because the check itself actually comes from the BOCs, but the BOCs get it. They, they, they file whatever they have to file, I don't know exactly what they file, but the check actually comes from them, but it is state aid, but it's a BOCs aid.
Okay. Thank you.
They have a funding source.
Outside of us.
Outside, yeah.
The funding source is us.
Completely.
Just Garrison, but all the components.
All the components.
Yeah. Basically, they're, you know, my, I don't know much about BOCs finances, but they're not supposed to run at a profit, so they, they offer a program to, say, 18 component districts, and say, 18 districts take it, and then they run the program for the year, and they thought it was going to cost $20,000 in the 18 districts, but it only cost $15,000, and that $5,000 gets sent back to the districts, unfortunately.
Okay.
So that's how that.
It's unused revenue, they have to redistribute.
Yeah, and that's supposed to have ongoing revenue.
Okay. That makes sense. Discussion item, wait, yeah, I got it, I got it, I got it. I'm getting better at this. Thank you. So, we had a second, is that right? So, we need a vote. All in favor? Let's see, let me read the whole thing, sorry. Be resolved, Board of Education, the Garrison University School District accepts, I already read this, I know. The consent agenda for items B through J, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions, ayes have it? Abstaining? Okay, very well, very well then. One abstention, and so that's one, two, three, four, four and one, correct? Four ayes, one abstentions, and we move on. Discussion items, here we are, committee updates. From the Planning Committee, we have a meeting next Wednesday.
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth, thank you very much, next Wednesday is Yom Kippur. Wednesday the sixteenth, okay, at 7:00 PM, all right. And in that meeting, we'll be discerning which coherence model we would like to follow. or at least investigate, and then we'll come up with some sort of maybe action, process plan or procedure, figure out how to move forward. Okay? All right. Facilities Committee. Jill's not here. Laura, do you have an update?
We don't.
You didn't have it, okay. We will have it soon. Audit Committee.
Melanie?
Sure.
The audit committee met last, or two weeks ago? The last week?
Yeah.
Last week at 6:00 PM, we reviewed the audit, which was very detailed, and showed that how well our business office handles our finances. So thank you, Sue, and to your team for leading us to a very positive audit.
Thank you.
One of the things that did come up was that some, we, and we as a board are aware of this, that some schools are, have been attacked by...
Ransomware.
Ransomware. And there is a service that the auditors group can provide to test our technology, make sure we are protecting the student and staff data as we should, and that is secure. So that is something that the board and various committees, it might affect policy, can look at going forward as to how we want to approach that, to ensure that our data, our students, staff and everything is carefully protected, and we don't land in the same boat as some of the other schools in our area. But overall, very exciting audit committee presentation, and again, thank you, Sue.
Yeah, the issue of ransomware is pretty serious. I mean, these algorithms come out and they start phishing for people, usually through email. So it's very important that we, board members, be vigilant about how we use our email and social media presence, any number of things can be used for phishing expeditions. And, you know, this happened right down the road at Woodbury Monroe, and they couldn't open their school. They will, basically, the idea here is to steal student data and hold it ransom for payout, and they will release the data.
Make it be $39,000.
Which is, yeah. So this, these algorithms are running all the time. So, I mean, if you can think of how important a transcript is for some students who want to go to college, and they not, they hold it ransom because they can eliminate the data.
Do they live in the money?
They can...
They paid out, the taxpayer dollars went to paying off the ransom.
Because the...
Just why not?
Also disclosure of private information, disclosure of disciplinary behaviors, any type of information that's held digitally, that can be covered, can be distributed publicly. So they hold it ransom so they, till they get a payout. People have ransomware insurance now to be able to, with the different insurance companies to be able to pay this out.
And even when you pay out, there's no guarantee that you're gonna get the full information or any information back either.
Right.
There's a risk in the negotiation itself.
Like, like with our emergency planning, there's some difficulties with digital technology, right? I mean, it, both it's very helpful and also can be very problematic, you know? People can call you from wherever they are. Is that a good thing? They can call you without looking at their email. They can look at their email while they're on their phone, which is not a bad thing unless they don't use it appropriately. It's a, it's a mixed blessing, the digital life we live in, and we just have to protect the ones we care about. And so, something to think about with the policy committee perhaps in the future. Policy Committee. Courtney, wanna...
No, because I think Sarah has, has already has her documents been prepared. But we met, we had a good meeting, we're plowing through it, we're sticking to our schedule.
We reviewed section 2000.
Yep.
And we're on track to do 3000, the 3000 section. So 2000 is internal operations, 3000 will be community relations. And we've also reviewed some policies that have been brought to light in light of the changes to the immunization law, that we're pulling out of other sections and taking a closer look at going back to Erie one BOSEs and asking them if they have revised language. Those would include 7130, entitlement to enroll, 3280, use of school facilities, materials and equipment, 7660, parental involvement for children with disabilities, and 8440, home obstruction. So we're just working through that, and we will meet again at the sixteenth as well.
Yeah.
Committee meetings.
We've definitely learned, though, that by updating one policy, it can be like playing dominoes, and all of a sudden you have to go out and search and update five other policies or figure out how they all relate to each other.
Yeah.
So it's not as simple as just sort of methodically going one by one.
There's a problem of clarification, right? One clarifies another, or excuses another.
Or they might need to be moved. Some of these suggestions are to move some of them from section to section in order to, if they're long-term, some of these policies are replaced with only one. So they might not belong where they were put initially.
We're jumping around a little bit, but pretty much sticking to our plan.
Okay.
Any questions for the Policy Committee?
Just the two of you?
No.
It can only have three board members on it, but we have a slot for another board member if you're interested in policies.
Easy, no poaching, man.
Come on, dude, no.
All, it's, all committees can have up to three board members, because otherwise, if you go to four, you're...
You go to four, you're quorum, and then you have, you're such a token meeting all.
Policy meets two times a month, ten in a row.
Ish. Just, but a good question nonetheless, and it's something we have to consider. That'll be a discussion item B. Board and school committee charges, we have a raft of committee charges here. If these committee charges are to be revised, the irony is, paradox is, the committee has to meet the revised committee charge to get the committee charge approved for the revised committee charge.
Say committee one more time.
Yeah, right? It's something like that. But, so we have, they have to meet, and so what we have here is the discussion items are committee charges for the future. Some of these, can you just briefly describe, some of these are going, these are building committees mostly, and you can question some charges that have been left over from previous?
Let's see, athletic, education, safety and health, technology, environmental ed, and calendar are all building.
Right, the rest are...
District.
District, and we just have to approve.
Board.
We have to approve that.
Yeah, and what we'd like, the building committee, we would like to have these approved so that we can meet and then align to the district priority, the new district priorities. And add, we're gonna add a communication charge as well in the future.
All right. So I don't really have any questions about them because they are, we just have to note that, you know, our procedure is to act upon these charges, we have to discuss them.
I also just want to bring attention to that, there are nine here, and that's a lot for a small school, especially with the district priority ones that we're trying to align, because there are layers of work in there. So when we gave our district priority presentation, those five or six committees will then have embedded other things such as literacy, technology and math.
Right.
And each one of them will require study groups of staff and administration. So there's, we're asking a lot of our school personnel, and community members who want to be part of this work. But we feel like if we're able to get these charges in place, get these study groups in place, we're really able to gain some ground and momentum in where we want to go as a district. But I just want to be mindful of, you know, we teach, we work.
Right.
We run a school, we run a district, so this is also a lot of work, good work, but just be mindful of time and capacity of who we are as a district.
Some of these are required to have, like safety and wellness is required, I understand, but correctly by the state, as is things for the board, audit is required by the state. Things like calendar, I don't think are...
Right, right. And they can, they can ebb and flow too, you know? They may, they may exist for a reason and then could...
Possibly disappear.
Go away, disappear, yeah.
Or combine some committees, so you're not doubling meeting time.
Right, like the education one day.
Okay. Item C here, Personnel Committee. If you guys remember, it was recommended that we consider adopting a Personnel Committee, and the question was put forward back in September 14th, and maybe in a meeting, what should, should we establish a Personnel Committee? And if so, what would the function of a Personnel Committee look like? And I threw out some ideas, I believe, identify possible new positions. The question is whether it's a board committee or a building committee, or what exactly would we want for personnel? It was recommended to us by an outside consultant that we considered this. And what would we want? And I think the question is, is, you know, why would we want it? What would we want to come out of it? Better understanding of roles and responsibilities perhaps of how positions are carved out here, help or assistance, assistance to the superintendent, administration with hiring. It doesn't necessarily be, necessarily need to be a board or a building committee, it doesn't necessarily need to exist, and I just want to know whether you guys, in what capacity, this is still a very, you know, nebulous question, a nebulous committee.
I can see how it would overlap with other, with other committees, but the idea of having a committee, a Personnel Committee, that would consider how we're deploying our personnel here, whether you wanted to change the mix of the way that we spend our personnel budget, is something that we can see we can be addressed by that committee.
Like designing positions and things like that?
Yeah, and I, I think that maybe having, you know, I'm maybe off the reservation here, but having some kind of board input or collaboration in hiring, although that may seem to be a more function, I don't know, but, but I can see that that would be useful, a useful function, something that could enhance the hiring process in some way. So those are, those are two functions that I can imagine a Personnel Committee fulfilling.
Yeah. That's possible. Thoughts? Thoughts? Still thoughts there on Personnel Minutes?
Laura, do you have a thought?
I just had, made a few notes just sort of to your, your points.
Yes.
And my first question to James was like, what is the, is there a problem that we're trying to solve? Like, what is, what are we trying to solve with another committee for personnel?
Right.
And one of the pieces is to serve to identify possible new positions, right? And so my response is that it's really the job of the superintendent to make recommendations for new positions based on meeting the needs of the district. So the committee, it, it wouldn't be the charge of the committee.
Right.
It would be more of an advisory sort of like.
Right.
And maybe it fits better in the building with, with board presence and not with a board. And then define roles and responsibilities in new positions. This is also the job of the superintendent, to develop job descriptions for employees. The new positions are developed or positions change, the superintendent can share the new job descriptions with the committee for input. So that would be staff, and if board members are, are present, that would help inform what the next steps are. Because it gets a little wonky with civil service positions.
Sure, absolutely.
County plays a big role in developing those job descriptions, so that really, they're pretty inflexible on those pieces.
Right.
One suggestion was serve the work with the admitted policy committee to lay out hiring process and expectations. I mean, we definitely have a process in place, but if this needs to be more formalized, I think this would be a good place for the committee to work on. I mean, we do, we post on OLOS, we craft the descriptions, the roles and the need, we have multiple layers of interviews, we have a, we have a writing sample, we have a demo, and we can lay that out and then see if there's anything else that would help ensure that we're getting the best for our students in the classroom, so that might be a nice piece for that committee. Serves as part of the interview process in an advisory capacity again, I would suggest, as for staff and for board. And that needs to be clearly established with this position, because what is, what is the role of the committee in the interview process? And it really, I think, has to be clear, and it can't be about, well, I'm interested in the third grade hiring, but I'm not interested in a custodial hiring, right?
Right, right, right.
Or a transportation, or my kid's going into fourth grade, so I want to be part of that committee. It has to be...
That'd be a conflict of interest.
It would be a conflict. So just making sure that we're very, very clear and mindful about, you know, what, what this interview process looks and feel like.
I think it's a, it's one of these, I think Laura raised a lot of good points about how a Personnel Committee can be misinterpreted or interpreted as, rightfully interpreted at times as board overreach or interference with the superintendent, superintendent's role. It was recommended by the district superintendent, I'm not throwing Jim under the bus here, Jim Ryan under the bus, so clearly he's watching. So, but, you know, I have to, it would be really interesting in seeing, I think, what he was looking for is greater communication, greater understanding of what the experience is like to be an employee, that the board should be aware of the experience of what it's like to be an employee here. And I think that that was part of it, or just feel informed and more transparent in our interactions. And I don't think it should be a, my, my recommendation would be that it not be a board committee, but that, you know, that the board sort of work in appropriate ways to ensure that we are doing best practices, that we are aware of the processes, that we are maybe advising on, maybe we, you know, when important or when necessary, that we play an advisory role as part of the interview process, not as part of the judgment on the hire, but as just another voice to say, oh, this is, this was our takeaway with our 10 minutes with so-and-so, or 20 minutes with so-and-so. That maybe that would build a little bit more cohesion and trust in the process, as opposed to, you know, I think that was his aim, was to build greater trust with, between constituents. And I think that was really his aim.
I think when...
And I just don't know exactly how to do that without any weird board overreach. And I would, would put firewalls between the design, between the board and the role, the superintendent, principal on any of these matters. But it's an interesting concept, and other, other boards have them, right?
Not many.
Not many, but some do.
Because when you hear personnel, there's a...
Trigger.
There's a trigger of confidentiality, job, you know, abolishing of a, you know, you can't have those conversations, abolishing of a position, person, especially in this small environment. It's, it's tricky. So I think if this is done, it has to be very clear that what, what the charge is, you know, what the problem is, and just kind of solve.
I mean, I, I had sort of like a somewhat different take on this. I mean, I, I can really see the benefit of it, I mean, and I'm not, I'm not ready to make the decision of what I feel about this.
Right, that's why it's a discussion.
I'd like to think about this a little bit, because I'd like to know what Jim's reasoning is on it. And I can, I can imagine, but I certainly don't want to create, would it be favored creating a necessary bureaucracy? But, but I can see a consultative value in having a committee that's focused on Personnel issues. But I, you know, again, I'd like to think about some of the discussion on it.
I think it requires, you know, look, when the district superintendent recommends something, you have to take it at face value, that he has, he or she has a rationale, you know, it's, you just can't be dismissive of it. I think it's not a bad idea, it's a question of how would it play a role in our small school district, and what would the function be? And I think, you know, it's important that we be mindful, when we take in any consideration, we have to be mindful of the structures we operate in, the roles and responsibilities we operate in, and whether that be limiting our voice or empowering our voice, we should just be aware that there are boundaries that we have to be respectful of. And, you know, constructing committee, you call it personality, you call it, I don't know, whatever you would call it, professional development committee, I don't know, whatever you want to call it. Maybe if there's a limit, a way that we want to, the way that the superintendent or the principal or, you know, feels that the board could serve in that capacity, in that capacity would strengthen communication and understanding. And I think that, that is what, at the heart of what I think Jim is talking about, strengthening understanding and communication between board, administration, teachers, parents, everybody.
Looking to clarify his, his take on it.
I think it'd be absolutely important to send him an email and say, can you clarify what you're thinking a little bit here? What would that look like? How would that look, you know?
Whether the board decides to move this, there's an informal, because I can see it being, taking elements of this and embedding it in other committees, because I also might have thought we...
Because then also my thought would be just perfect, like, we.
That'll be the 10th one.
Yeah. But I do think it's important, and maybe it's just a communication issue or something where we can make sure that, you know, as new people join our community, that they're all, we have trust in them and we're all behind them and supporting them and helpful. They are our person. So making sure the board is a just, it's not an us versus them at any point, if that makes sense.
And I guess what is it that will help you get behind that decision you were just saying?
Yeah, exactly.
What is that? Is that a committee? Is that a, I don't, I don't know either. I mean, yeah, what is, what is it that the board needs?
How do we build, you know, how do we build trust and understanding and strong communication for, you know, what we're doing? It's my, it's my pet project, you know? Not the personnel committee, but how to achieve greater sense of community in a school district that is as small as this. A greater sense of understanding of each other's conditions. We just don't have enough understanding of what it is to be a member of this community. We wall each other off rather than bring each other together. And we, we just need to find venues and opportunities to connect, to understand what it's like to be in the business office, you know, what Sue goes through when they do some sort of tax situation with the union. What a teacher, what it's like to be an employee here, what it's like to be a board member, you know? What it's like to be a parent in this district. All those, all, anything we can create to build community and understanding. And I think that might have been his aim, but I think David's right. Reflect and clarify intention.
And will a personnel committee add to what that goal is?
Who knows?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, would, do we want to exert time and personnel, personnel committee to get where you want? Will that get?
It might be a communication time, you know?
It may fall under the district's area of communication.
It might be, and it might be communication around whatever, you know? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Duly, duly considered, and we will consider maybe some more, but, you know, that's what it is. Considered and we will consider maybe some more, but, you know, that's what it is. Board goals. You all have them? Wow, this is the, the red line. The red line one, wow. I'm sorry, was it?
Yeah.
Oh, God.
I said it to you twice.
Ouch, maybe I need to learn how to turn that off. Is this a Google Doc? I think it is.
You want me to finish editing that?
Okay. We're gonna have to finish editing it?
Well.
Thought I did.
Take it.
Yeah. So any questions about the goals? Just imagine everything being edited correctly here. My apologies, I thought I sent the cleanup version.
Can you give me, like, about this, the person I'm seeing it?
Sure, sure.
Why are we doing this?
Because a board needs to have goals. The board, there are two sets of goals. There's the district, there's the district goals. We call those at this point priorities. Those are the district priorities. But then there are board goals. How do we as a board function better? So what we're looking at is a kind of internal goal setting for us. This is, these are goals that we hope to achieve as a board so that we can function better. That's what they're designed to do.
What's the action that you're looking for tonight?
Well, we have to approve them. These are goals that we came, when we had our retreat, we started talking about the things we wanted to achieve. And then Courtney and I separated them into goals and objectives. I sent it around and there was some editing involved, obviously.
Good work, this is.
I'm glad the public didn't have to see this right now.
Do you want to read the goals?
Sure, goal number one is engagement, seek to plan and execute with intention. That's the board's goal, right? Objective, develop a strategic plan, identify areas where board members can have a meaningful impact through serving on committees and priorities. Goal number two is governance, objective, so it would be improved governance structure. Sorry. Objective A would be empower committees through planning. Objective B, improve communication between board president and trustees. Objective C, streamline agendas, articulate expectations and orient new members. Objective D, ensure policies and practices are lawful, effective and relevant. Objective E, adopt a board evaluation tool. And then we have issues surrounding personnel. And so if we can adopt some of these things, right? If we can have, you know, and this would be things that we do that within our purview that would be helpful, right? And that's collaborating with administration if we need to determine funding or highlight needs if they come to us. So that we're actively seeking to empower the administration and actively seeking to empower ourselves. Goal four would be communication, develop stronger community board relations, foster opportunities for communications between the community constituencies, and objectively encourage community to contribute positively to the districts or community market, et cetera. So these are all ways, these are four goals that we determined that we would like the board to focus on to improve the overall performance of the board. Does that make sense?
You know, here's the thing, we have two new board members.
Yes.
Right? This is new to Jocelyn, it's certainly going to be new to that. And these, you know, these kind of board objectives can either fall into some kind of category of rhetoric and, you know, not something that really engenders thought and collaborative work together. And given the fact that we have two new people on the board and that this is an overarching statement of what the board's goals are, I think that in order to make these more impactful and more meaningful, that we should put this off for a session or two and, and give our new members a chance to assimilate this, comment on it, be sure that they're comfortable with it or make amendments to it. I don't see what the rush is.
Yeah, I, I mean, I certainly would want to be able to take a look at it more and maybe hear the history of how it came about as well. So, yeah, I'm happy to dive into it a little deeper.
Sarah?
I think, I'm in favor of these goal sentences, but I do take that point particularly with the, it was important to make sure every, in order for us to accomplish these goals, all seven of us, eight of us have to be working towards it together.
And understand exactly what each one of them means and which one, you know.
And I'm also with this personnel support administration and the recruitment, retention and development of district employees.
Yeah.
I don't know if that is a board goal or is that what you're talking about with personnel? And that when you're designing these, these probably should be in public meeting unless it's about interventions within the board and what you're, so these probably should go and draw workshop, at least some of these, so that the public is part of the process.
Sure. That makes sense. The question is like, yeah, the question, David's asking, shall we table this in order to get greater input for? Yeah. So a lot of this is about board performance. How do you, how do you evaluate whether you did a good job as a board, as a board? You do it by setting goals and objectives and figuring out whether you achieved what you're supposed to. So this is what we're supposed to do this year, right? We might achieve half of these, we might achieve none of these, we might achieve. But how do you evaluate how you've done as a board member or as a collective, right? How do you do that? So we're about to go through a board evaluation training session in November. So the question is, is when should you set out for goals? So this is, a board exists basically annually because there could be elections and resignations and whatever. So although, you know, I take your point, David, at the same time, we wouldn't really be looking at this until November. So that's July, August, September, October, November. That's five years into a.
Five months.
Five months into a 12-year cycle, or even less than that.
But do you think the retreat would inform, the retreat on self-evaluation would inform the board on what they.
Possibly.
They can set their goals on, so that, and be guided with a consultant, I can say.
Well, maybe, maybe not. I think the evaluate, the question is, is, the question is, okay. So the board exists till the next election, right? And then the board could change, right? So, yeah, I, you know, I hear your point and I take it definitely into consideration that when we designed these, we were five people designing them, right? We came up with these during a retreat, do you remember?
Yes.
Yeah. So the question becomes, you know, you know, if it's the board's will that we table it, then we table it. And I totally consent to that, of course, because I'm, you know.
So I'll move to the table.
Okay, second?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, you don't, we don't have to act on it, it's a discussion item.
Discussion right now.
All right.
You can table the action item.
We can table the action item. All right, all in favor of tabling the action item?
Aye.
Aye. Nays, abstentions, and the ayes have it. All right. It's this death, three accidents, I think, on Route Nine in the past week. There's one, there was one last night, fish kill on Route Nine. So I wanted to bring it forward because we have eight buses or eight.
Eight runs.
Eight runs that cross the intersection of Snake Hill and Route Nine.
Do they do the, that stop and?
Yeah, they go, they're right from Travis Corners across. Laura, can you talk about some of the discomfort and consideration that maybe the bus drivers have and the transportation directors, the transportation have regarding this?
Yeah, we had a conversation with Michael during one of our leadership meetings, just sort of talking about that section. Because we, we know historically that people are speeding. It sort of has the double, double lines, there's passing lanes. So there is a recipe for disaster, we all, we know that. But we're talking with Michael, he says, yeah, our buses go over four times, eight times total each way. And that they don't have, they're, they're this bulk, they don't have the momentum to speed across when folks are flying by. And that it definitely makes the drivers extremely nervous. He says he's white-knuckled when he goes. And so we've been talking about other, other options that we could think about. And maybe Phillips Brook may be an option while we're having these conversations. I know the community is heartbroken over what happened to the Mercurio family, but also know that this again is a problem. So what can we do as a community? How can we have a louder voice, which is together? Possibly find a solution, whether, I don't know, if it's a light or stop signs or, but finding something that will help slow down the traffic and make it safer for all travelers.
What's holding up a light at that intersection? I mean, whose charge is it? What, what agency of government can, can demand it?
Department of Transportation.
So.
It's a state road. It's a county, State Hill is a county road.
Is there anybody who thinks that it's a bad idea to have a light there? I mean, is there, is there an argument about this?
Well, I think that the sheriff investigates these things and then the sheriff asks the DOT to step forward and give a, you know, some sort of diagnosis.
Has he done that?
The DOT?
No, has the sheriff?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And they have, they've had people there investigating. After a death, they have to do it. DOT will come out anyway. The question just isn't that intersection. The question is really, okay, so there's two issues here. One is, we approve the bus routes. We did that back in August or September. We approve where the kids go, what buses go where. We do that. And the question is, are we comfortable with this? I think I leave it to the facilities and the drivers to say, we're not comfortable with this, then we have to come up with a solution. This might impact children pickup times, return times, it's an issue. The other issue is whether we want to say publicly, either to the DOT, to the community, that we find Route Nine not to be a safe road. Or we have deep concerns and we would like a full investigation about the relative safety of both traffic pattern and signaling and everything else.
I mean, I have to believe that this is not the first time that this has occurred.
Just not the first time.
So, so we want to know what the history is of any kind of deliberations heard, any kind of decision-making that has or hasn't happened with respect to that intersection. Now, I understand that we can separately make a decision about what the bus route is. But there's some, maybe one of us or somebody can find out what the history of any deliberations about safety measures on that, in that spot? Could you do that?
Do you rate each other?
Well, we've had, you know, we've had other fatalities on Route Nine.
But I mean, but some Department of Transportation people must have looked at this before.
But the history of the evaluation of the, that intersection.
Well, I think that we could ask, I think it's certainly something worthy of the press for sure to investigate and to produce. The question is, can we ask the lawyer, I mean, perhaps to speak, to write a letter consisting that we get a sense of the thinking around that intersection, the thinking around traffic, the traffic patterns on Route Nine and the history of it so that we can assess whether that is a safe road for our children to cross? That's a fair, that's a fair role that we can play. We would like to determine bus routes. We need to know whether they, these routes are deemed safe by the Department of Transportation and what interventions could they offer to create greater safety?
What is, what is the history, if any, of their deliberations about that question?
Yes.
And have our lawyer make that?
I mean, that, I don't know, I mean, I guess this is a question. What do you think? I mean, I guess it's a question for Chris, right? Whether she can make this petition for us.
Yep, and then just figuring out. We've had consultants in the past look at our transportation and stops unsafe, routes unsafe, and then we redesign and reconfigure, so.
We're, right. We're asking a larger question, which is like, you know, we have to advocate for the safety of the children of the school district. We have to advocate, if we are allowing people to pick up, you know, we want to make sure that we, we have to advocate that for, hopefully, that the bus drivers feel that they can, you know, articulate their concerns to our director. And, you know, at the same time, if there is a intersection or a road that is creating, whose design might be creating an unsafe environment for our children to navigate or families to navigate, I think it's warranted that the school board finds some sort of resolution or some sort of effort to clarify whether that is indeed as safe as it could be for the citizens that we sort of represent. It's a frustrating situation.
We have, we have a, I'm sorry.
I was just thinking, in this situation, because as you've seen, we're a large group and it's together, we don't move very quickly as a full body. It might be a useful place to use an advisory committee of three or less board members who could be a little bit more nimble of working with the lawyer and doing some research into the past situations. Perhaps seeing if there's a way the board needs to write a letter, who that letter would go to, how if you decide to advocate something that would allow us to, and we could create advisory committee, dissolve it when we're done with the situation or the outcome we desire. Something that'll allow us to move faster.
I don't think we, I don't think we, I think we can move very fast on this. I think we should, we should talk to the lawyer tomorrow. And ask her if she's comfortable doing this, if that's appropriate for her to do. And if it's not, I think that, you know, I'm happy to volunteer to draft it. James can send it, James can collaborate together on this thing. And just get in touch with it. I mean, this is, this is not, I mean, if you were Chip Rowe, you just get on the phone and start making some calls. I mean, this doesn't have to be a bureaucratic enterprise, we can just do it.
Yeah, you can see we'll have to cough up the information. And they're not always very good about that.
Well, they may not be, but, but we have to ask them first.
Okay. And I think that it's a valuable, it's a valuable enough question. Very rarely do we, we sort of wade into this kind of question, you know, advocacy in this matter. But it's super important that we advocate for safety, security.
This is not precisely advocacy, this is informational. This is what have you, what have you looked at in the past? What, you know, situations have.
True or not, I'm not against proper advocacy.
I think it's probably also useful, just for our own informational purposes. I have a feeling, I think this is going to come up in the town council meeting. And we can, as individuals, attend that to see what is being discussed on.
Well, we have our own separate, our own separate interests here, Stan.
Oh, absolutely.
We definitely have an official interest.
Yeah.
That we have to definitely heap by. I mean, we have an official interest. I mean, we have our own personal interest, and then we have, I know that the town board, town board is interested, I know the sheriff is interested, and I think we have, we have to realize a responsibility here. And I think, you know, what that looks like is a good question.
I have one more question.
Let's, let's try to figure out. I like the idea of, you know, a few of us getting together and sort of maybe working together.
I think there might be more advocacy later on that we need to do, but in terms of that bus routes, does Michael or Mr. Forty have a recommendation now? Is he looking to make changes? Is he, you're supporting this now, before the letter, like?
We just, we just had a discussion during leadership.
Okay.
And that may be an option, although we haven't done a deep analysis, is it maybe Phillips?
Phillips Brook.
Phillips Brook, but not positive just yet.
And how would it impact people? I mean, we have to.
Yeah, time.
Right. There's an immediate, there's an immediate concern which that we have to consider, and then there's definitely, there's the immediate meaning the bus routes, and then there's this immediate meaning the road. This is not a mystery to anybody. This has been an intersection that's, many accidents occur, the PCNR just printed a whole thing on speeding on Route 9 in one week, 46 summonses, 36 were 15 miles per hour over 55, over 55, 15 miles per hour, over 55. So that's people traveling 70 miles an hour down past South Mountain Pass. That's fast.
So it's treated like a hazard.
It's treated, and we have buses on that route, and we have families on that route, and we have employees on that route, and we got, if they say, yeah, that's an intersection we can cross, you know, we need to know that that's, whether they've done their due diligence. And that's what David's concerned is. I'm sure, in their metrics, they might seem like there's a reasonable number of accidents that can occur and a road be safe, but as far as I'm concerned, this community cannot absorb those, those statistics. We're too small, the community, to absorb the kinds of metrics that they might impose upon a road this size. And I think that's probably what we're going to get back.
And please know that only recently did we find out that there was a nervousness transportation side, so that.
Sure.
It all came to light when, you know, a situation happens, so now it's time to, to respond and maybe redesign, but unfortunately, we find these things out now. And so, again, that's about communication. If people feel unsafe or nervous, they need to make sure that they let us know in a timely fashion so that we can, we can respond appropriately.
Okay, we got to move on. I know that there's at least one member of the community here that wants to speak on this issue, and I figured we would, let's, you want to do it? This is what I want to do, we have action items now, but what I would like to do is, can I have a motion to move public comment forward by one agenda item?
Some move.
Second, anybody? Okay? Am I right on that, Trish?
Yes.
Yes, come forward and please speak on the issue. Yeah, just real quick, okay? I have to read this. During our public com, the comment period, we encourage the public to speak openly and voice concerns. Please note that any person wishing to speak during the time shall comply with all provisions of the GUFs district policy on public comment. Keep your comments to three minutes, conduct yourself in a respectful manner, address district matters only. In experience with school, we ask that you refrain from addressing topics related to personnel. Such concerns should be discussed privately with the superintendent or appropriate administrator. The board is here to listen, but will not be providing immediate feedback or engaging in open dialogue. We ask that you seek the form that best suits your concerns and contributes to productive dialogue. Any necessary follow-up will be noted and provided through the appropriate channel. Members of the public wishing to comment, please sign in with a district clerk, then step up to the microphone and identify yourself.
And nothing about impeachment.
All right, I got to go. Trisha Mulligan, I have one kid at the school in the seventh grade. There's actually quite a lot of action behind the scenes already on this. Just as a little side note, I put something out on Facebook the night that it happened, I felt so frustrated, I went to bed the next morning, there were over 100 comments, including by, you know, Jennifer, her, her mom, you know, people want this. So I've been talking to Nancy Montgomery, we've been talking to DOT, DOT did go out, they need to put the line down so they have speed and weight, because as you were saying, the two passing lanes, they're going at ridiculous, you know, it's like white-knuckle when I go across there. So, anyway, and our kids eight times. So, what Nancy is saying, and this is already an action, is resolutions to the board, to the fire department, to various entities within the town. This is already going out there. I sent you one tonight that was just a silly thing that I put up, you guys know better than I. But this is an action that's already happening, and it's not just like, let's talk about it for months and months, it's like, our kids are going across this intersection, let's deal with it. DOT's job is to keep, keep traffic moving, but it's also to keep people safe. I think one of the things that's really happening now, this is our community, and people are at risk in our community, our children are at risk in our community, this is an action item, something has to happen, it's already happening, and what we're asking is for the school board to get on board.
What do you want us to do?
Resolution. You do a resolution, the resolution is going to the town board, the resolution is already going to these places, to the fire department. The sheriff's already been there, I mean, they sat there for an hour and did, like, their guns and stuff like they do, and DOT has the information of the amount of accidents, which are a lot, and Ray said last year or the year before, can we please address nine? So this is already in our ledger, that the board has been concerned. And if we have a light there, maybe it'll slow things down somewhere else along the line, so there's fewer accidents down the line. It's our community, and these trucks and speeding cars are just trying to get, you know, to the light ahead of the next person. And it's not polite, I mean, okay, now let's talk about impeachment, and the whole climate of our, of our populace, of our, of our communities, let's just care about each other and slow down. And I think this is a viable solution. Board, I think, should, should be on board with the resolution, as other entities will be discussing, and we're actually, we talked to Chip, we're going to get something in the paper, we're just trying to gather our things, someone else is talking to DOT, Sue Serino is, we've been talking with her in relation to DOT, so there's already a lot of action happening, and I, for one, can't sit down and do nothing. It's my community, and the case, and your case.
Thank you. If you have specific actions you would like us to take, please send an email to, to.
I emailed you.
Send, you, send an email to the GUFs account and the superintendent, okay?
I shall do that.
Thank you so much.
I mean, you guys can write a better resolution than I wrote, I just, you know.
Just, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So making a formal request, okay?
I'm, I will make a formal request.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, action items. Public table A. B, approve the Board of Education Committee charges. Okay, motion to approve the Board of Education Committee charges?
Some move. Second.
Excellent. B, resolved, Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District approves the board and school committee charges as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? Ayes have it. Approve the Board Committee's schedule of meetings, okay? They're up on the website, they can change, but we have to approve them because they have to be noticed to the public, okay? So, motion approved, seconded. Being resolved, Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District approves the Board Committee's scheduled meetings for 2019, 2020. Please prevail yourself of those meeting days, and please be faithful about attendance. Ayes have it, please? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nays? Okay. Ayes have it. Motion to accept the external audit report.
Some move.
Seconded.
Second.
Be resolved, Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District accepts the external audit report for 18, 19 school year submitted by O'Connor Davies LLP. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nays? Nyet, no, no nays, it passes. We need a motion to approve amended tax warrant, this has to deal with the errors that we discussed earlier today, or mentioned earlier today. Need a motion to approve the amended.
Some move.
Seconded. Okay. Due to an error in the board, due to the error on the Putnam County tax rule, the tax bill assessed value in tax rates, it changed the part of the Board of Education to amend its warrant. Therefore, be resolved, the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District confirms the tax rules, authorizes the tax levy, approves the tax warrant for 2019, 2020 school year as per the attached, which you've seen, hopefully. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. Resolution agreement, this is, okay, I need a.
Some move.
Some moved, the second?
Second.
Okay. Being resolved, the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District ratifies the resolution agreement, timely estimate superintendent schools in September 12, 2019 to settle. On behalf of the Board of Education, a special education claim related to student number All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Approve the updated building level school emergency plan, need a motion.
Some move.
Seconded.
Second.
Being resolved, the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District approves the confidential updated building level school emergency response plan for 2019, 2020 school year. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it. Excellent. All righty. Any other public comment? Board comment? Anyone have a, anybody want to welcome Jocelyn? Say something nice?
I mean, I, I.
Yay. No, go ahead.
Well, Jocelyn has been a very creative and valuable member of this community for a long time. It's very nice to have him as part of this organization. Pete W. Wednesday, glad you're here.
Picked a killer of a meeting to start.
I wanted to say thank you to the board and hello to the public, and this is an unusual circumstance that I get to join kind of months into a term, but I really look forward to serving as a trustee and using these kinds of, you know, skills that I have and pushing it forward, so.
I don't know whether, whether you've met Matt Spicer yet, but you'll be very pleased by his presence in these meetings, he's really a.
He's a fellow second grade parent, so our children, boy and girl.
Bottom bounder.
Are definitely, yes, yeah.
Always good to have educators on the board, always good, because it gives us a sense of what teachers are going through and what they're experiencing, and also sensitivities to the whole institution. Other board member comment? Yay for PISA. Thank you, Laura, for seeing it through. Thank you for, thank, please send thank yous to all the PISA people involved in the PISA project from the board, as well as to the people involved in the emergency response team, two notable moments of gratitude that the board should have, that we have strong people delivering on necessary items, so thank you for that.
Just want to second that, thanks, Laura.
Okay. Need a motion to go to executive session because it's just not late enough.
Some move.
Being resolved, the Board of Education Garrison Union Free School District adjourns to executive session to discuss the employment history of particular individuals. Thank you very much, and good night. We will not be reconvening, we will be reconvening, but no public session. All right, make sure you log off, okay, everybody? Make sure you log off and not just shut your thing down. Security, security.